Welcome to the Hank Cisco Show. Today, our guest is Tony Darden. A name, Tony Darden. A Darden name is so well-known in Narsetown. I'm familiar with a Darden. He used to play football for Rittenhouse Junior High School. So I guess he's most likely a distant relation.
You're probably referring to Bill.
And, but Tony Darden is a councilman here in Narsetown. And I've listened to him at council meetings and I've watched some of the email on our, on the computer. And he's pretty, pretty good. He's a pretty good guy to have on my side. And I'm very proud to have a councilman with the enthusiasm that he has. And, and I think he's gonna do a lot of good for Narsetown. And I'm very happy to have him here as our guest. And so you get to know him, you know? We want to get to know the people. Like last week, we had the editor of Times-Hurl. We want to get you to know the people that are, that are around us and have something to do with influencing our community. So without further ado, I'm gonna announce him like you do at Madison Square Garden. And in this corner, weighing about 165 pounds, representing Narsetown, Tony Darden. All right, Tony, tell us something about yourself. You were born and raised in Narsetown, right? Tell us about it.
Yes, I am, Hank. Thank you for the introduction and thank you for reducing me down another 40 pounds. I appreciate that. Haven't seen that weight since high school. It's great to be back here at the high school where I graduated in 1976. And actuality, actually had two years of education right here in this department, which is...
Right here in Narsetown?
Right here in Narsetown, right here in this audio video department.
No kidding?
Under Tony Coya through those years of '75 and '76 that I was up here. So it's pretty exciting to be back and, and more exciting, you know, just to be a part of the ongoing process of trying to change things around in Narsetown.
Right. Well, I, you know, I read an article in the paper where one of the Narsetown School Board members wanted to do something about changing the image of Narsetown High School and Narsetown, you know, has an image of, you know, that's a problem here and there. And I think, like, I know that you're gonna show a lot of interest because you graduated here from Narsetown High School. You played sports. You participated in this same program that they were doing here today. And, and you're involved in the community. So I think we're gonna talk about changing the image of Narsetown and how we can do that.
Right.
And, and one, one thing's good that you're a councilman, elected by the people, right? Now, why did you, why did you get involved in politics?
I, I think the main reason why I got involved in, in the politics is I really wanted to give something back to the borough of Narsetown. The borough of Narsetown have, have given me a lot, had given me the opportunity to do the things that I've done. I, I saw that there was a decay in, in, in the neighborhood environment. I, I wanted to make an impact. So that's the main reason why I got into it. I, I saw apathy from constituents of Narsetown. Very disappointed about not, the government of Narsetown not being responsive enough. So, and I, I wanted to get in there. I wanted to be a champion for the people of Narsetown.
Well, you're, you're doing a good job and it's not, you know, it's not a one-man job, you know?
Absolutely not.
It takes everybody. You know, to change an image of a community that, that has a reputation, that, you know, what people talk, you know, passing on rumors that it's good or it's bad. It takes everybody, you know? It's not, the police department cannot do everything. The council can't do everything, but the community has to work together.
Right.
And, and, and there's an article there, the Times-Hurl, the newspaper, they, they can be helpful. And Stan Husky was mentioning about this little article that have the two cents, you put your two cents in, you call on the telephone, if you have a gripe or something, just record it and they'll put it in the paper, you know? And, and air some of your complaints. And so, and same thing with a councilman. I think everybody should get involved with and know who your councilman is. The people that, you, you, are you a councilman for the whole community?
That is correct. I have, I have been elected to the Borough of Narsetown Council as Council-at-Large.
Okay.
Meaning that we represent the entire borough of the Borough of Narsetown. We have, you know, Ward Councilperson as well for the various district, District 1, 2, 3, and 4, 4 council people. And then you have the 2 Council-at-Large, 3 Council-at-Large, that represent the Borough of Narsetown. And I was elected as one of those as Council-at-Large. But you, you hit a point. And, and the point is that it's gonna take a concerted effort of all parties in Narsetown. We're talking about the business community, we're talking about homeowners, we're talking about the landlords, which is a hot sticky issue in Narsetown right now. We're, we're talking about the business community and even the youth of Narsetown. We all have to pull together to make this change, to turn this vessel around to be a positive influence in Montgomery County. Because there is such a, a negative connotation and a negative...
That's the word, negative, right.
And a negative image that's been portrayed about in Narsetown. And it's not really, it really is not warranted.
Right.
We, we have our, our, our ills and social ills that plagues our community, but everybody does. I, I think it's blown out of proportion and, and the opportunity that Narsetown offers people to affordable housing and, and some of the accommodation and, and things that the county offers is a great place.
You're right. You know, we're talking about the police, the council, different agencies, service clubs, but let's not forget the clergy.
Oh, absolutely.
The clergy, I think, has to play a bigger part in getting this town together. I have a son that's a missionary priest in Peru. And, you know, he's, has a, it's a whole different ballgame, you know? The responsibilities they have down there. He's up in the Andes Mountains. So I, I would say that a clergy has, can do a lot. And I remember when I was a police officer in Narsetown, where we had very close contact with, with all the clergy in, in Narsetown. But now, we have some, the, most of the ministers or so don't even live in Narsetown, see? So it's hard to, you know, you get a recording, you call and you get a recording. So we have to get this back together, face-to-face. And, and I think what you're talking about, and I know that you're gonna, you, you've got a good future, I, I really, you know?
Well, I, I hope so.
I kinda like it, you know?
Thanks, thank you.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be your cheerleader. You know, you're starting out as a councilman, but you know, there's a lot of steps and a lot of different positions that, but I, I think with your enthusiasm, I think we, we got something good working here in Narsetown.
Yeah. And if I could dovetail on your comment about, you know, clergy, you're absolutely right. They are a very integral part in the whole moral fabric of, of the Borough of Narsetown. And they need to be more visible in, in some of the social issues that's happening in, in the, in the Borough of Narsetown. And step forward and, and, you know, help us and help those who need help in the community to turn things around.
What do you think is the biggest, biggest problem or the biggest issue that, that can help us bring Narsetown back? Now, we talk about revitalization and all. What's, what's that about? I mean, is that gonna be good for, for Narsetown? Or it just gonna be a fly-by-night and, you know, in and out and the transit, you know? Are we gonna not lose our identity? We are, we're the county seat.
Right.
We're the county seat!
We are.
And we can spread our wings!
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and we need to really flourish in the county seat and take advantage of a lot of the state and federal money that could help us get to where we need to go. But the whole revitalization effort is an effort going, is, that has been spawned to bring in economic development into the Borough of Narsetown. There's some, some major things that, that hindered Narsetown from reaching that goal, I guess, earlier. And that's one of the, the exits off the Pennsylvania Turnpike. We're trying to correct that problem now. It's, it's, again, all this stuff is gonna take years to happen, but we are in the process of making those things happen. The, the actual groundwork and infrastructure for allowing an exit ramp off the Turnpike to happen, the whole Lafayette Street corridor that they are currently working on for traffic club, traffic flow, as well as economic development with the O'Neal Project happening along that riverfront, is all in the process and it's gonna take a couple of years. And we hope to see that, you know, Narsetown become that Kunchehocken, Manioc-type revitalization.
In other words, if the student's in the 9th grade today, when he's ready to graduate, you know, Narsetown's gonna be a lot different, right?
Yes, it will. That's, that's the plan. And hopefully, by that time, they will enjoy the fruits of the labors that we're putting forth today.
And I, I think that, that's, that's important. Now, we talked about sports. I, I called, called you one day and somebody said that you were down in Maryland or someplace where your daughters and competing in something. What, tell me about that? I'm, I'm interested when I hear the...
Word sports, yes.
In sports.
As you, as you may know, and, and a lot of people know in, in the Borough of Narsetown, you know, I, I was an athlete here at Narsetown High School. I ran track and field. I played football as well, but my primary sport was track and field at Narsetown High School. Since then, I had moved on. My, my daughter had kinda picked up where I had left off at. And I was kinda hoping that she would be a Narsetown High graduate, but it didn't work out that way. She, she has competed on, on a national level for, ever since she was about 11 years old in the sport of track and field. So I'm always traveling between the months of, of, what, May through August. I, I could be in California, somewhere in Iowa, Florida, with, for competitions, that is.
Yeah.
And, and she, she has grad, since graduated high school and now at the University of Miami, where I just came back Sunday night from Syracuse where she completed the...
You'd think I called you. I think you were in New York.
I was in New York, yes. And she competed at the Big East Track and Field Championships there.
But you know, I, I think, I think people should say, well, you know, they complain, but, but know who to complain to. You're gonna complain, you know, call up, call up the councilman. Get to know your councilman, right?
Right.
I think that's important. A lot of people say, "Well, I, I have some, the traffic light here, the street light's not on," or that. I says, "Well, you know who your councilman is?" "No, I don't know." That means you didn't vote. So I think that if Narsetown wants to really become a power in, in, you know, in, in the county, is to get people to vote. The power of the vote, right?
People do not realize how important it is for them to be registered voters. Even, even the, the high school students here need to understand, those who are 18 years and above need to be registered voters and understand what power that has.
Right.
When they bring a block of voting people...
Right.
To make policy change and make policy happen in the Borough of Narsetown. But, but you're right on target with that. We need people to come out to vote. We need people to understand the whole, the legislative process.
Process, right.
I think in Narsetown, from my perception and being on council this past year, a lot of people do not understand that what is a councilperson and what is their job and their responsibilities. And they're, they have a lot of complaints, they have concerns, and the first thing they want to do is complain to the councilman. And I'm not necessarily sure that that's the appropriate place to do their complaints. Yes, we will hear the complaints. Yes, we will address the complaints and we will take it to the appropriate person.
Right, right.
But they need to understand that if there is a concern or problem in the community, that is the, it is the administration that really addresses those problems. For instance, if you have a problem with, big problem right now, snow. And snow removal.
Snow. Tell me about it.
Yes. You really need to address administration and the Public Works Department to have the snow removed from your block or your neighborhood. As a councilperson, we, we will take it and we will take it to the Public Works Department.
Right. Well, you're almost like a receiving ward in a hospital.
Exactly.
Okay? You wanna get a treatment. You go in the receiving ward, they check you out and, okay, if you need some pills, they give you some pills. You need an operation, send you upstairs. So in other words, you're just shifting things where it belongs.
Exactly. And as a councilperson, our, our functionality is really to, is a legislative body. And what we really do is create laws that govern the Borough of Narsetown. If, if there's a, a law that you would like to see changed in Narsetown, is there something that you want to...
Improve?
A new law created in Narsetown?
Right, right.
Then you come to your councilperson and, and we proactively try to create some legislation to assist in that problem. And that's what we do as council. But a lot of people come to council to resolve problems and...
Yeah. You come there with something creative once in a while, right?
Yes.
I think some, come up with some ideas, you know? Like, you know, like there's, there's a dangerous tree hanging over the, you know, it's gonna knock, it's gonna wait for a storm to come down, you know? Or the traffic, you know? There's a lot of things. One thing, I, the newspaper, I, I think is doing a, the Times-Hurl is doing a good job. Now, I, I read in the paper where they got, they're giving the high school kids some cameras, disposable cameras, and they can go out and take pictures and then just send them in and the pictures will be used in the Times-Hurl. So they wanna get involved. So I think this is great. And then we have that, you call, in fact, I wanna give that number, 610-272-3522. You call that number and you say, "Look, I got a problem here," whatever it may be. And you don't have to, a lot of people like to sit down and write letters, you know? But at least you'd, you'd call on telephone and, and it records and they'll, they'll print it. So I think that's, that's, that's great, you know? So tell me something about your athletic background. You say you played your track now?
Yes.
Or on the plate and you participated?
I ran, participated in the sport of track.
I'm an ex-boxer, so when I say, you know?
Well, you know, here in, at Narsetown High School, you know, I was Pennsylvania State Track and Field Champion in 199, in 1975, in both the 200 and 400 meters. And then again, in 1976, Pennsylvania State Champion in 100, 200, and 400 meters.
And you're still in good shape.
It's yards. Back then, it was yards. They, they did a metric conversion back in 77. We converted from yards to meter, but at the time, it was yards. And during those years, I was also a junior national champion for the, for the United States. Both in my junior and senior year in high school, I had the opportunity to compete over in Germany and Russia when I was in high school.
Look at that. See that? You, you students, listen to what he's saying. I mean, you get an opportunity to travel, get involved in sports, get involved, you know?
Yes. You know, without the support of my, my parents and friends, you know, who knows where I have, may have been or wound up at? They kept me focused, they kept me in the direction that I needed to go. And it allowed me the opportunity to experience some of the other cultures in the world, which carried on over into collegiate and then after collegiate in the sport of track and field. So I, I've been very blessed in that respect of, of having a, a good support group, having people who were very much involved in, in my athletic endeavors, which carried over for me with my daughter. And it's been successful for her as well. But in high school, I competed, as I say, on the junior national team. And then on in college with Arizona State University, NC2A team champion in, as a team champion and runner-up in the 200 meters on, on the collegiate level. I then moved on to the World Championships where I was a gold medalist in 400 meters, participated on several United States four-by-four-hundred gold medal teams at the Pan American Games.
Man, oh man.
World Championship. I mean, I, I traveled pretty extensively...
That's great.
From high school.
And all them experiences, you bring back to Narsetown, see?
Yes.
That's, that's what's important, see?
I, I think that's very important. And as you touched on that subject right there, I, I think that's one of the problems that's happening in Narsetown. And I, I call it the brain drain. We have all these tremendous people in the Borough of Narsetown who graduate from Narsetown High School. They become doctors, they become lawyers, they become, you know, athletes, and they, and they move away from the community and they never come back to give anything back.
Right.
I shouldn't say never come back, but not enough of them come back to give something back.
No, you're, you're right. And a lot of them drifted away. A lot of them became millionaires, you know? And I remember Rittenhouse Junior High School. I can, I remember all, all the poor people were Rittenhouse Junior High School, you know? And the rich people were at Stewart. Which, well, I wouldn't say rich, but you know, was a, but wind up millionaires, you know? You take Tommy, well, he's a millionaire, but Tom Lasurde, Genardi's, and Morabely's and, you know, all these Trenettes and all, they're all with the Rittenhouse.
Okay.
And so, you know, and they got this education and, and they worked together. And, and they all moved out of town, but they still have an influence. And that's what we gotta do. We gotta get maybe the people that moved out to get them involved a little bit in our, in our community.
Certainly.
In, in different ways. And I think, but the image that you, you got, you got the, the ingredients, if I were a big political guy picking a guy to run for office or something, you have all the background, good family background, you know, you're a good family man, you have good school activities. So this is what we're, we're building an image here. And that's why I'm glad to have you on the show, let people know what we have here in Narsetown, see?
Thank you. And I, and I really appreciate the opportunity to come here. And again, thank you for those kind words, but as you said, we, we need, and I think it's very key, we really need to somehow harness some of the alumnis of, of Narsetown High. They don't have to come back and live in Narsetown, but have some type of influence on some of the things that happen in Narsetown or develop some, some programs...
Right.
To help spawn other young politicians and athletes to, to wanna be more civic-minded.
Let me put it this way. When I was a policeman in Narsetown, I had to keep going back, I, when I was a policeman, well, you know, I had to live in Narsetown. All policemen had to live in Narsetown. Councilmen had to live in Narsetown. The people were, you know? But now, it's, you know? But if you're gonna live out of town, then live out of town and you're gonna work in town, have your heart in Narsetown. Really, "I'm here to work and I wanna do something to help Narsetown." Whether you're a policeman or whether you work cleaning the streets, whatever, whatever job you have, working for the borough, but have your heart here. Let's all work together. And, and I think we can make a real good community. Now, I was reading another article in, in the Times-Hurl where a lady's complaining that the, the cost to get in the zoo was enormous. I think it's, what, six, seven bucks or so? And, so that's, that's a complaint there, so I don't, you know?
Yeah, there's probably a lot of complaints.
Another, another thing, so we'll have to look at that, you know? We're gonna look at, you know? It's a, it's a, it's a nice park, but, you know, we're, we're in a depressed area here. And another thing is the meters.
The parking meters?
25 cents for 15 minutes. I mean, you know, that's, in Philadelphia, you know, they, they, I, I know, you know, I used to be in charge of the meter maid, you know? And you, they started out with a penny, then it was a nickel with the meters, you know? So now, it's a quarter for 15 minutes. And I don't know, we don't have the businesses down Main Street like we used to have where people would come and go. So I don't know, tell me something about that.
Well, you, you have to...
I don't wanna put you on the spot, but you know?
Well, you're not putting me, you're not putting me on the spot. I mean, as council, we, we thought it, we, we saw a problem and a concern in, in the business district of Narsetown, where we have people coming into Narsetown throughout Montgomery County handling, handling business. And they come into Narsetown and they, and they park on Main Street and they're there for hours at a time. And people who wanna do business and some of the, the smaller merchant, they had to walk several blocks to, to do business. So it was kinda deterring, you know, business activity on, on Main Street. So bringing in the parking meter, try to, it had everything to do with traffic flow and to keep traffic moving, to discourage people from taking a spot and maintaining that spot the entire day.
You know, I was reading another article where Upper Marion is, I haven't written, interviewing a police officer, a police officer for many years. And they're talking about how Upper Marion started, I remember there was only one policeman over there, it was John Boyle, it was the chief of police. Now, it's pretty well, you know, sophisticated. But maybe we have to start right in here. I remember Narsetown was known as the gateway to Valley Forge, you know? We were, hey, we were a big deal. So now, maybe we have to find out what, what caused us to get down the ladder. And let's find out a way of getting back up the ladder.
Right.
And what are some of the things you think were our problems that caused us the, the problem we have today? Is it the government or whatever?
The, the way I see it, first of all, we are in, if I get to your question, we are in a unique situation where we are nestled right between two huge mall complexes.
Yeah.
First of all, that is, that is one of our biggest problems, where you got people being attracted to those two areas. So Narsetown have got to come up with some type of creativity in developing a strategy to bring people into Narsetown. Find some niche, whatever that niche will be. I, I personally think maybe going with the outlet malls type situation, right up on Logan Square. I don't know why Logan Square's still vacant. It's beyond me, it baffles me. But may, maybe bringing in the, the, the outlet malls, the, the, you know?
To bring people in.
To bring people in Narsetown, so where you can get some discount shopping of, of some of the name-brand type material, the Nike Outlet Mall, the Foscares Mall. I mean, develop some type of, of niche type retail outlet to bring people into Narsetown. Now, with that said, we, we created this problem in Narsetown. To answer your question, I believe, and it's my opinion, is that we never had a leadership that had the visionary to move Narsetown in one of those types of direction. We've always been reactive to situations as being, instead of being proactive in, in establishing a vision for Narsetown. Where do we wanna go? What type of community do we wanna have? And because of, no one really, because there was a lack of vision, as I see it...
I do see it, right. Hey, the call is shot, you just see it.
As I said, there was a, a lack of vision for, for the Borough of Narsetown.
I don't want somebody out there saying, "Who, who, who..." "We got a problem and you're there, we're trying to fix it."
Right.
And, and if you have to step on somebody's shoes, you step on them.
Right.
That's all. And you step on their shoes and then grab them, you know, like this? And then you get their, you get their attention.
Right. Yeah. There was a lack of vision for, for the Borough of Narsetown. And subsequently, we have some of the, the problems that have corrupt, that came into Narsetown, you know, with the, the whole housing situation of Section 8 and, and all the properties being cut up into apartments and it's, it's a mess.
Yeah.
And we, we have a, a uphill battle to, to change things around.
Well, now, you were talking about changing the, what's it, the, the third-class city or whatever, changing the, the laws or something? What's that? Tell me about that.
Um...
The Home Rule Charter.
Oh, the Home Rule Charter, yes.
Now, they're talking about changing that. I was around, I was a policeman when that, when they started that, you know? It was a big, they had people had to vote on it and all that. But what do you think? Did, did need some little changes there or what?
I think it needs to be tweaked a little bit. That's my, this is my personal opinion. We, we have a situation where, again, people not understanding council and our, and our responsibility. They come to council, of course, to solve problems, but we don't have a power, for the most part, to solve those problems. We have power just for legislation means. So with that said, I think there should be a more equitable type of situation when it comes to distribution of power in the Borough of Narsetown where we all can have some input.
Well, I think we covered quite a bit.
Oh, I know.
And, and now the people, you, you met, you heard Tony Darden speak, you heard what his thinkings are and what he, what he'd like to do. And he's not a one-man operation, but I'm just, just happy to be able to expose you to the people here so they know who you are. And, and the people in the surrounding communities know that we have a councilman here who cares and who is well-educated and is experienced and he knows the town, okay? And he knows the community. And the fact that he travels a lot, he brings back a lot of ideas. And I'm very happy that we were able to spend this time this morning, even though we were almost late and stuck in traffic. And don't worry about it. I think everybody in Montgomery County had water in a cellar at one time or other this last rain and snow that we had. So, I'll go home and start mopping, see if we're getting more there. So, Tony, I wanna thank you. And really, it was a pleasure to have Tony here on our program. And I'll see you later. And I think I'm gonna be on one of them air cooking. I'm gonna be cooking some zeps and hoagies and cheese steaks, ready for it.
Ah, sounds a good one.
Okay.
Sounds like a good one.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody.